I'd like to call this meeting to order. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes. Make the motion to approve the minutes of May 23rd.
I get a second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passed as five to zero.
I want to stay.
Excuse me?
I will stay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chairman's update? I have nothing at this time to report. Nancy Dooley, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Durkin, engineering report?
Nothing in, except for the, my report for specific items on the agenda.
Okay, we'll wait until that time. Nancy, do you have any new subdivisions, site plan submissions? We have none. The board have any questions at this time?
No.
You're good. We have two public hearings before us tonight. One informal discussion. A little early for the 7:15, can I get a motion to take a break?
Chairman, I make a motion to recess for a brief moment, probably till the 7:15.
I get a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, take a few minutes for the start of the 7:15 meeting. It's now 7:15. I'd like to reopen the meeting. It is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor or against, please come to the podium, state your full name. We have the application. Attorney Megan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for the record, Attorney Richard Magnin, 194 Central Street, Saugus, representing the applicant regarding the first item on your agenda, which is the modification of master plan, a site plan for Essex Landing. House President this evening is one of the principal owners, Mike Touche, Attorney Paul Feldman, and the engineer, Paul Machonda. The, as the board knows, this is the result of, actually, a meeting that decided, took place, actually, February 2nd, at the manager's call town hall. There were probably 16, 15, 16 people there, including Mr. O'Brien, Vice Chair Meredith, to discuss the manager's concern that the plans weren't conforming to what had been submitted. And as a result, Tetra Tech, I think Jesse, I'm sorry, Jesse Schuma was also at that meeting. Tetra Tech drew up a list of requirements that the town wanted to see in a modification. And I think that letter was submitted to us on March 6th by April 1st, I think. Modified plans in responses to Tetra Tech were produced. And as a result of all that, we have the modification plans that were submitted to you and which is, which are the subject of this particular agenda item.
Anyone had a chance to review the points submitted? You don't have which plans? These were the plans that were submitted.
We submitted 16 copies of the plans.
The red line ones?
Those were the red line drawings that were submitted at the meeting?
The modification plans were submitted on April, excuse me, April 10th with an application and 16 sets of plans.
Anyone have any questions? So if I'm correct, Attorney Megan, the plan that you're speaking of was, what we asked was a red line set of drawings to show the work that's not completed and what you intend to do?
I don't recall any request for a red line set of documents. Plans were submitted with all the changes.
They're not red, they're not?
Okay. So Machonda did, that's the set we-
Are these the plans that we were submitting and speaking of?
16 sets of plans with each, all the changes made that were listed on Tetra Tech's letter to us saying the town wants all of this done on a modified plan. That plan was submitted to you.
This three sheet dated April 6th, 2024. Seems like everyone has them.
Plans are dated April 6th. These other plans, they-
Right, the actual application went in April 10th, so that would make-
That would be in line with these. Well, this was voted as a major change at the time of the meeting? The evening that these were presented?
I don't think the board had action yet. I think at the prior meeting-
It is as major, yes, that's why we had to have a public hearing.
That may change to a public hearing, we voted it major, that's why it's on.
So this is the public hearing based upon the board's decision because I think last time the agenda item was informal discussion, which, in which you'd make a determination whether or not you thought it was significant enough to require a public hearing and if this is the public hearing.
So I was hoping that the applicant or its engineer could explain to us some of the stuff that's here.
Before we go on, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
On, as you move to Collins Avenue, on the right-hand side, you see, I mean, left-hand side, you see all the construction, buildings and all that. On the left-hand side, there's not much of anything right there. What's the zoning on the left, I mean, on the right-hand side of Collins Avenue? What is the zoning on the right-hand side of Collins Avenue?
As I knew it, there used to be a house there, so I would assume it was our one. Well, I knew there was a white house here. We don't have any of that old information here.
And it used to be found up above.
That is correct, I remember that. I don't have any of that, I don't have the old master plan.
My son-in-law's relatives, once over seven, that range of things, that's how I remember them. I'm just wondering what, what it is zoning, because we have restrictions on using streets. The, you know, parking residential zones.
Well, on the plan here, that's called a private way.
Is it private?
I, I have done a little research with Mass DOT, and they call it a, I was gonna ask that of the applicant's engineer. They call it an accepted street of the town. As of, right here, it is on-
It's an accepted street?
2020, as of 2021, it was an accepted street by the standards of Mass DOT. I don't know, Mr. Durkin, maybe you could help comment on that?
This is, this is actually the second item of the meeting tonight. I've inquired of the town clerk who keeps the roads book. Collins Ave is not in the roads book. The town clerk has provided me a list, and on that list, it showed Collins Ave as an accepted street. I, I did do some research last week, there is a 2013 list in the book that does have Collins Ave as an accepted street. There is a 2016 list and the 2021 list, both show Collins Ave as an accepted street. The applicant engineer did apply, reply me a document, an email where they, they asked the town clerk, and the town clerk said to them that it is not, it is an unaccepted road. I did email the town clerk, she, I talked to her again today, she sent me an email that she went to the, she checked the town warrant minutes from 2016 to 2020, and she could not find it there. However, as you've noted, and I can give, given, it was an extra copy of the email, I didn't forward it to Attorney Magnin, I've given a copy to both Jesse and that is, however, it is on Mass DOT's roads website as a city, as a city or town accepted road. Normally, the, the state relies on the community to provide the information. The state reviews it, then adds it to the list. So, so I think there's some doubt in my mind whether it is-
Well, I think we could probably find out whether the town meeting voted to accept it, that, you know, tell me, has it to have plans submitted, have the plans recorded at the registry, and then that's, then it's accepted.
Correct, she did not find that in any of the town meetings.
Which, why she?
I think I need to inquire from Mass DOT what is their basis, because what, how they handle, someone from the town has to actually forward them the warrant from the town, so-
Or they can register it, am I correct?
Yeah, they, they need, the town has to provide the documentation for Mass DOT, for Mass DOT to show it accepted.
But again, it would probably be easy enough to get records whether the town meeting voted to accept it and whether the plans were recorded at the registry.
Correct. I mean, one of my items in, you know, and I don't know if it's the circular, but one of my, my items was the applicant provide a written opinion on their claim that Collins Ave is a private way, and I said, I'm looking into it as well, so. There's just things that transpired since the report and it was accepted.
Mr. Long?
Yeah, as you know, we get chapter 90 money from the state based on the mileage that we have in Saugus. Is Collins Avenue part of that?
Well, according to this declaration here, they're saying that it is. The one I have here from Larry, I believe this came from town?
The email on the last page is from the town clerk. The table with the Mass DOT information-
Yeah.
-is from Mass DOT's website.
And on this one also, it has that it's an accepted road.
That is, that is the 2021 listing of the town clerk.
Okay, that's, that's something I'm gonna leave the applicant up to dig up and find out, what it is.
I'll, I'll inquire with Mass DOT, you know, if they have a record of what may have been submitted. I think your point is valid, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions on the road? So without a determination of who's what, we're wanting why, it's nearly impossible to make any type of determinations here this evening, so.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. With the removal of the two commercial pieces, the hotels, off of the plan, does that, does that change, are we in compliance, does that-
It's not in compliance with what they have permits for.
... compliance with the zoning article?
I don't believe it is, I don't believe you can have that type of mixed use, that is a question for-
Because essentially, this plan, which I'm happy to see that a lot of the things that were in the Tetra Tech's thing were, have been addressed here, but when you remove those two, that was approved in the master plan to have those two big pieces, the commercial hotels, this-
There were, there were hotels, and like I said-
But this officially removes them?
I briefly saw this, I think it was something that was supplied early on-
Does it make us out of compliance?
Showed two hotels and a parking garage that was supposed to go in this space on the old master plan.
Right, so-
This here shows, shows the-
Does it?
Two residential units. And it shows the mixed use, the cafe, but doesn't show anything that's on the existing master plan. To make, I determine, this is not the same board.
Can I ask counsel? Would this proposed change for this modification, does that jeopardize our compliance for Article 21, Saugus zoning?
Before I answer questions about that, Mr. Chair, did you want to have the presentation by the applicant's engineer?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Paul Feldman, I represent the applicant. Let me give a two-second introduction, hopefully make this a little easier than it has to be. First of all, with regard to Collins Avenue, there is no town meeting vote of the town of Saugus accepting Collins Avenue as a public way in the town of August, town of Saugus. The vote does not exist, is not presented at the town meeting, it is not a public way.
So we're asking for proof of that, sir.
Okay, the town clerk-
No word is good, but I'm looking for proof.
I'm gonna tell you the two pieces of proof that we have. The first piece of proof is the town clerk, who keeps the records for the town, has advised us that it's not a public way, and the town clerk has looked at, as Mr. Durkin just said, town warrants from the day the road was built until the present, and there's never been on a town warrant in front of the town meeting, a, a request of the town to accept it as a public way. So, yeah, that's what we were told by the town clerk, the town clerk holds the records of the town. If you don't want to believe that, I can't help us. The second-
It's proof of purchase, sir, it's not whether we want to believe it or not.
We've told you what the town clerk has said, we've given you an email from the town clerk-
I will ask the town clerk for her judgment on it.
Ask the town clerk. The second thing is, since the road has been built-
Yep.
-it has never been maintained by the town for one minute, never once snow plowed, never once the drainage checked, the town has never stepped foot on Collins Avenue to maintain it as a public street in any way, shape, or form for the last seven years. So it would seem to me, if it was a public way, why would Mike Touche be plowing it and taking care of it as a private way?
It's a very good question.
It's because it's a private way.
Well, that's-
That's, that's the reality.
So we've done projects of this nature before, and as long as they run the construction as any subdivision, until that is done and accepted-
Okay.
-that we don't, the town doesn't plow them either.
Okay, it's not a subdivision, number one.
Okay.
And number two, it's never been presented at the town meeting. We stand here before you, and we are telling you, check it with the town clerk, do whatever you'd like.
Yes.
It is not a public way.
Okay.
Now, with regard to the plans that are in front of you, there was a site plan approved in 2016 for this development. There was a master special permit plan or a master plan approved for this development. What you are looking at is, on the first sheet, what has been built to date, not what will continue to be built, what has been built-
Forgive me if I'm wrong, you, you submitted a master plan to build this project and got permission to do so.
Look at sheet number three, if you look at sheet number three, you see the other two buildings, I, I don't, if you don't let me explain to you-
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get there.
Okay, well, I'm trying to keep you on sheet number one for a second, so you know what sheet number one is.
You just said sheet number three, and here I am.
Okay, so now you're on sheet number three.
Yes, sir.
What you see there in red are the parts of the project that have been approved that have not yet been built. That's what you're looking at, the parts of the project that have been approved that have not yet been built. They're still on the plan, they're still part of our permit, they're still part of what we're doing in phases, but they haven't been built yet. When you go to the first sheet, which is the as-built, because they haven't been built yet, it's just shown as vacant land, it hasn't been built, there's nothing on there, because the first sheet isn't as-built.
So this is imaginary, we're not gonna build this down.
It's not that it's imaginary, that's what the approved plan is, that's what's sitting here today.
That's what I had asked in the beginning.
There it is.
Okay.
Sheet number three.
So it's not imaginary, it existed as a master plan.
That's the currently approved plan you're looking at.
That's right.
It's currently approved plan. Now, I, so I, I don't, I don't want to surprise the board, we will be back in front of the board, and we will be seeking to amend this portion of the master plan that has not yet been built, to propose an assisted living development in this location. And we will be back here when we have those plans drawn. We don't have them drawn yet, we're still finishing the agreement with Wingate, who is the proposed purchaser that wants to proceed with the development, and they are going to proceed, I can't predict you if it's gonna be one month or two months, but we'll be back before the board, but until we're back-
Well, that knowledge means a lot to the board right now.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm letting you know.
Continue, please.
So this is the currently approved plan, the two buildings in red have not been built as shown on the first sheet, which is why it's just white, because it's just, hasn't been built yet, and we have a potential purchaser that would like to develop that area into an assisted living facility, and in order to do that, we will have to be back here requesting the planning board to modify the currently approved plans with an assisted living building, and when we have those plans, we're gonna submit them to you for a public hearing for your consideration. That's not what tonight's about.
No, we're, we're trying to figure out what it is about, so.
So I'm gonna, I'm happy to tell you.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, so if you go to the first sheet, if you go to the first sheet, what, what tonight's about is, on the first sheet, this is as-built, this is what's existing on the ground, and there are certain things that are existing on the ground, Mr. O'Brien, you pointed them out, there are a couple of temporary parking areas that are existing on the ground today, you see them in blue, they're built, on the as-built, they're shown here in blue, that are not on the originally approved site plan from 2016. We are asking the board tonight to modify the originally approved site plan to allow for these temporary parking areas until the rest of the development is built out.
Do we have an agreement from the owner of those?
Yes, we have, well, we have a, a license agreement from Aggrega for, for this, and the rest of the land is owned by the condominium that owns the property, I mean, that's-
Say that one more time, I'm trying to-
The two areas that are on land of Aggrega Industries, yes, we have a license agreement from them to this.
For the two lots?
For these temporary lots, yes. For the, for the one that's down here, that's on the applicant's property, so that's, the one that's down here is on the applicant's property.
So that leads me to the next question. Why do we have temporary parking lots if these have been built and they don't have enough parking?
Well, they're, they're under zoning, we give you the zoning chart, there is enough parking under zoning, the, the existing as-built parking on the site conforms with zoning. The reality is, is that the users at the property, you know, the people that are living there, because we haven't completed this phase where there'll be additional parking created, and the entire master special permit is based on 100% built facility, there, there was, there was a need based on demand to have a couple of temporary lots in these locations, but the reason why they're temporary is when these two lots are finished, either with an assisted living or with hotels, there, these lots are not gonna be required. But at the moment, as we sit here today, there are more parking spots built on the site that's, that is owned by TD Holdings than zoning requires. So we have excess parking under zoning, but zoning is just parking spaces in the zoning by law, we have the reality of people living there, and we have physically cars, and we don't want them to just put the cars anywhere, so we created these temporary spots, which are not going to be needed when we finish the rest of the development. So that's why they're temporary, and-
So the parking garage will be now envoys on the next set of plans?
Not necessarily, no, not necessarily, because that's what, that's what the designers are doing now, they're looking at the assisted living facility, how many spots are gonna be required, the assisted living facility is probably gonna have parking underneath the building, and we're gonna figure out that, does this, do we need the structured parking lot, do we need the structured parking lot at that size, at that size that it was originally approved? If, if and when we have those plans designed, which is gonna take us a little time, we will be back and lay the whole thing out for your review and consideration.
Because I'm seeing a lot of parking space up here, if these proposed islands are gonna go in, it's gonna eliminate more parking.
And the proposed what?
Proposed parking, this, this is proposed, it wasn't done, I don't know if it was-
No, no, everything is black is built, everything in black is built.
Okay, and in purple, what do you see there, right under your fingertips?
The, the right, the, the stuff that's in purple is what was shown on the original site plan, there was a contemplation that they were gonna have stairs there, but the stairs are located in a slightly different spot.
Well, I'm talking about proposed island, if you look at the entrance of the building.
Right, so those two islands were on the original plan, they were never built.
Why?
Because when they laid this, when they laid this out, and they laid out the parking the way they laid it out, they concluded that they didn't need those islands, so they didn't build them, and so we're asking, we're asking for permission not to build them, that's why we're here, we're asking, we're here to ask you to modify that we don't have to build them.
And what we said, sir, in the very beginning, we don't have a full set of the old master plans, what was approved and what wasn't approved. So when you look at this, I determined, and me alone, I was speaking for the board, that these islands were never put in, and if you look at it now, this island takes up two spaces, this island takes up two spaces, this island takes up a space-
We don't want to put them in, that's why we're here, we're here to ask permission that on the original design plan in 2016, it showed those islands, they were not built, we don't think they're necessary to build, and we're asking permission that they not be built, they're being taken off the plan.
In the earlier stages to improve that master plan, these are, these are items that the board looks at.
Right.
And they say, okay, that's gonna be nice, that's gonna have plants, flowers, trees, whatever, so we've eliminated all, all that was on the master plan-
Well, you haven't-
-by not doing it.
No, there, there were other, there were other places where there were trees, and I mean, you've been physically out there, there are other landscaping islands. If, if the board says, if you guys say tonight, no, build those islands, well, then we'll either accept that, and we'll go out and build them, or if we don't think there's a real good reason, we'll appeal the decision, but either way, we'll get an outcome on that-
That's fine.
-and then, and then, and we'll either build them or we won't, and, and that'll be the end of it, you'll tell us, you'll tell us, but what we're, what we're trying to say to you, or what we're asking, because we told you we would do this, because you wanted this done, you said, look, there are certain things, they're pretty minor, you're talking about more than $100 million worth of construction, you're talking about some minor variances, when the, when the project was orig-
I'm talking about not having enough parking for the size of the buildings that have been built, that's not minor.
Well, we, we comply with your zoning, so, I, I don't know, we have enough parking under the laws of the, of the, of Saugus, so I, so-
I'm just asking if this was part of it, why we didn't do it?
No, these temporary parking spaces-
And if you do it now, what's it gonna do to your parking numbers? You've already rented lots over here, we don't know what you're gonna put in.
We actually still have, we'll still have excess, I think, how many we have, like 30, 40 extra parking? We have like 30 spaces more, we have 30 spaces built in black lines that are built on the ground that are required by zoning.
That helps us tremendously.
So if you want those islands, yeah, you're going to make it harder for those people to live there, that's okay, that's what the board wants to do. We're suggesting.
I'm just seeking clarification, I don't make it hard for anybody.
Okay.
I'm just seeking clarification.
Paul, can I make one comment on that? My mic too shaky on, I just want to make one comment on, I'm still trying if I can. So when this project was approved in the zoning, it was required shared parking throughout the whole site. So the architect, I'll be honest with you, I'm not using that architect anymore, he didn't do a good job on explaining that to everybody. So like the building down below, we have the required parking under the zoning for all the occupants that are there, but until we finish the other two buildings, the shared parking, like what Paul said, when we come in with the next plan, we're going to show those lots being eliminated, and we're going to show you more shared parking on this site. So that was the reason the parking garage.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Dusset.
Yep.
I'm trying to make the board aware of what is going on and what's happened.
So I'm just saying, we have the required parking, 30 extra spots under the zoning to occupy what we have, but as far as shared parking goes, the whole master site, we have 110 extra parking spots on the master plan, but it's not built yet. So if we put those people on this area, we won't be able to build the buildings. So we'd have to find another place to put them. So we're asking tonight for a little bit of relief, until we come in with the next plan, that we could keep those temporary lots, and then when we come in, like Paul said, with the master plan, that we're going to finish this project in the next two months, we're going to show you all the parking on the site with plenty of parking. That was approved in the original plan with less number of occupants, because the assisted living requires less parking than a hotel. So we're going to have more open space and less black area. And the parking garage, if we build it, would be one or two stories instead of four stories. That's what's going to happen.
That's the parking garage?
Yes, on the face. So if we need the parking garage, if we don't get enough surface parking when we come back with the assisted living, we're going to add a floor to get all.
You yourself know what you're going to do if this board doesn't.
I know, I know.
So this is a help.
The board has to come in with Tetra Tech to come in, show us what you did and build, and that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what I'm, the sole modification that's tonight, I don't want to, part of the reason why I don't want to spend too much energy on the assisted living is because we don't have plans to show you, you don't have it. We haven't given it to you yet because they haven't been drawn, they haven't been created, so we don't have them. So to talk about what we're going to do doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, other than to let you know what's coming, why we're here, why we're here tonight, is that, and you've hit it, the biggest variance is that there is some temporary parking which wasn't conceived of originally in 2016. We have enough parking under zoning, the practical reality is, even though it's enough under zoning, they need, our users need some more spaces, we're asking the planning board to approve these temporary lots, and they'll be removed when we complete the rest of the development, because we will no longer need the temporary spots, because we will be creating excess spots, because we know what our users need. So this is a temporary condition, but we don't have it on our master plan. You guys don't like that, justifiably. You guys say, don't build stuff out there that you don't come and show us, we agree with that, we're here.
Question, the top lot, temporary, for the temporary parking, shows that it's halfway in the road, at least a third of the way in the road. Is that?
What kind are you on?
I'm on the.
Okay, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's at the end of where Collins Road ends, it's the, it's the end of Collins Road.
It's kind of woods up there, right?
Yeah, well, after those parking spots, it becomes woods.
Because it shows the Collins Ave continues through it, right here at the top, it says 40 feet wide, and I'm saying, how does he got a parking spot?
Okay, so that's the layout of Collins Avenue. At some point in the future, somebody may build the balance of Collins Avenue, because that's the way it's laid out. But that's the layout, that's not the, what's been constructed on the ground. What's been constructed on the ground is up to the end of those parking spots. There's nothing beyond those parking spots that's been built on the ground, but that's how Collins Avenue is laid out, so in the future, if there's a reason to, I don't know what the circumstances are, somebody can continue to build Collins Avenue. This parking's not going to be there anymore, it's only temporary parking, and we're asking it to be temporary anyway. But that's why it looks, the variance and the confusion on that is the difference between the layout and what's built on the ground. We're showing you in black what's built.
You said what's in black is built.
And what's in blue.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is the road in black? The line of the road, is it in black? Of course it's in black.
The layout, yes.
So I assume what you told us, so clarification is everything when you do this.
Yeah, 100%, 100%. So what's in blue are those things that have been built that were not shown on the original 2000 plan, and what's in red are those things that were on the 2016 plan that were not built. So we were trying to show you all the, all the little changes. Obviously, when you look at this whole entire thing, it, 90%, 95% of the project was built exactly in accordance with the approved plans. Yeah, there were some minor changes. In most towns, I think in the town of Sogus before the planning board that you guys are now running, and you have the right to run it any way you want, these kinds of changes would be classified as field changes, not changing the overall development, and typically, when the as-built gets submitted, they just become administratively approved. But you've told us that that's not the way this planning board wants to work, we want to approve it, and we hear you, and that's why we filed this plan.
In respect to the planning board.
Huh?
We'll go backwards one step, in respect to the planning board, you've explained to us why you have temporary lots, three of them, versus, and if you take these, and these islands away, you're going to wind up with less. You've explained why you have temporary. So it makes a little more sense to us. I didn't know why you had temporary.
I understand, I get it, but, and we're not, we're not fighting with you, you wanted us, you wanted us to come and submit a modification because you wanted to get what's built on the ground and the plans that you have in your records to conform. And that's why we, that's the request we're making tonight, to show you the differences, both what was shown originally to be built, which wasn't built, and what was built that wasn't shown, so that the currently, the current approved plans would conform to what's existing on the ground. That's what tonight's request is about. The only reason why I told you about what's going in here is it was a source of confusion. This is an as-built, that's why that's why. It's not the only sheet we submitted. We submitted this third sheet, which is what's currently approved but not yet built, and that's where we sit. We can go and build this tomorrow, it's currently approved, but the market circumstances, they don't, they don't want, the market right now is not demanding that we build these two hotels, that we don't have users for that, we don't have company.
Have you been up and down one, sir? You can't get a hotel room right now.
Okay, well, if you have a hotel company who wants.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying.
Introduce them, introduce them to us, and we'll build the hotels.
I'm just saying you can't get one right now.
Okay, you may not be able to get a hotel room, but we can't get a person who wants to build a hotel.
Got you, I understand it, that's a plus of a different color.
Right.
You just said that there's no call for a hotel.
If we, we have no customers who want to buy these lots to build these hotels, we've been trying to get that.
I'll get direct to the point. Part of this approval on this Article 21, and what you were given, was your commercial space that you were providing to build the rest of it out. Correct?
One more time?
So in Article 21, it says that you have a certain percentage of commercial space within your development.
It's a mixed-use development, it's a highway, sustainable districts, and mixed-use, right.
You're eliminating the other half of the mixed-use, is what you're saying.
Well, assisted living is commercial when you're, under your zoning bylaw.
Okay.
That's what the court just told us in our case, that we, that's why we, that's why we brought the case, the court just gave us the answer. So we don't have to be fighting about it.
We don't know.
No, no, I understand, but that's, we'll present that when we come in, that's why we won't have to fight about it with you.
I don't want to put the car before the hot, but I'm just trying to have an understanding.
So assisted, assisted living, assisted living was determined by the court not to be considered residential. So that's, the court's determined that, the residential density requirement doesn't apply to assisted living, the court has determined that, and so we're not going to have to debate those issues because we have the answer. And we'll give you a copy of the decision when we come back, when we come back with the.
So have you been back before conservation to clear up the?
That's our next, that's our next filing, we're going to do the same thing with conservation, there's certain, there are certain things within their jurisdiction that we're going to go back to them on, and I know that Paul has already been in touch with them. And they know we're going to come back to them, 100%.
So right now, there's three, on 15 Collins Ave, I saw three structures that are in the ground that don't exist anywhere, how did that happen?
Three structures. Oh, you're talking, well, you're talking about.
Up on Lot 15, yes, sir.
Okay, so this is the stormwater detention.
Right.
That was approved.
Okay.
What wasn't approved was it be lined and used for parking. In other words, this was physically built, that stormwater detention, that's on the original plans.
But it's not as a parking lot.
But not to have parking on it.
Okay.
But.
So above that, above the retaining wall line, and maybe Mr. Dusset can answer the question, there is three structures in the ground.
There's one manhole behind that wall, I believe, right?
Three.
Paul, right here, it's shown, right here on the drawing.
No, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a drain manhole, and I believe there's three of them.
No, there's one.
Okay.
That one drain manhole.
And there's a foundation cut that's been put in?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
But there's nothing here that's showing any, that is part of the land, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, that's, I'm just.
Yeah, that drain manhole.
I don't see it on what's existing, and I don't see it on.
So the foundation for the, for the next building?
15 Collins he's talking about, this hole's cut out.
It's cut out, but is there a foundation?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I said it's cut out for a foundation.
So we did, we did it all at once.
Okay.
Right, but you, there's no, you're not seeing a foundation, because there's no foundation there, it's a hole.
I didn't say there was, sir.
Okay, okay.
I said there's a foundation cut.
Yeah.
We should show that on a graded drawing.
Yeah.
Mr. Durkin, are you satisfied with all the little changes for the, you guys' alignment of stormwater infrastructure and relocated drainage infrastructure? Those issues?
My comment, my comment in my report is, it's not in my email, but I suggest the applicant write-in narrative description to help Tom better understand what is depicted in the comments. We're kind of getting that now, but it would be nice if it was a written narrative.
I don't know how we could have, I don't know how we could have depicted it clearly.
You just did a great job, I'll tell you that.
No, I'm talking about visually, I don't know what we could have done. We labeled, we labeled right in the legend, proposed, shown on the 19th site plan which was not built, that's in purple. Built permanent and not shown on the 19th plan, that's in blue. So we, and temporary, that's in light blue. So I don't know, I don't know what more we could have done to explain what this drawing is. It lays it right out, and we color-coded it to make it so.
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm just asking him if he's looked at it and he's okay with the changes, if he had any questions about the changes.
My comment in your report is I'm still looking at the modifications, this is a lot here, I haven't been looking at it, and Tetra Tech looked at it as well, I suggest that, you know, possibly the peer consultant can retain to review this as well.
And by the way, as Paul just pointed out, the written application that we submitted with the plans, it lays out all the different modifications. It, we've given you the writing on it. Again, I, I didn't think this was going to be a heavy lift, in fact, not only didn't I think it was going to be a heavy lift, I thought it's exactly what you guys wanted to see from us.
Have you seen this document, where it outlines it, why you?
Yes.
Do you have that?
I have it.
And I'm happy to answer all the questions, I don't want, I don't want, I want the board to understand what we're doing here. This is because we want to clean up the record, get this project back on the right footing, we, you know, the Tetra Tech review was maybe 60 comments. 55 of those comments have already been signed off on, they, we satisfied them, but there were a few comments where, well, you have these temporary parking lots, they're not on the plans, you've got to go and get plans modified to reflect that. That's, that's, when we finish tonight, we will have finished every single item in the Tetra Tech letter. Every single item will have been resolved. That's what this is, that's what these, these, these three sheets are about. Just want to make sure if there's anything else. And the reason why you're, you got the two sheets, the first sheet and the second sheet, and it is that there was a slight modification, you know, when the canes went in with the drive-around, that the board of selectmen allowed a drive-in, so that wasn't shown on the original plan, but it's on the modified site.
It's not on this plane right now.
It's on the second sheet. But it was built, it was built in accordance with the 2019 modified. See, the site plan was originally approved in 16, and it was modified in 19 to deal with the canes. So we were just showing you the iteration, and then the last sheet shows you what's still left to be built. But I, I don't want to stand in front of you knowing that we plan to come back with a proposed change and not tell you guys about it tonight, that would just be silly.
Do you have that, Paul? You have these three pages, or you just have that first page? You have all of them? You have page three?
Didn't see the master plan.
This is a modified master plan.
This isn't the original master?
This is the.
This is a modified.
This is the modified master plan. You have this?
I have seen my.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because it was modified in September.
I'm just curious, I thought from the original plan, there was a restaurant. There was proposal for a restaurant.
Mike, in the 2016, was there a restaurant contemplated?
Well, if the hotel was built, it would probably.
It would be within.
Yeah.
Okay.
That goes with the restaurant, in most cases.
Yeah.
There's a, there's, but there's a.
Cane stoner.
Yeah, so in the first lot, you probably know, with the lot that's up like where there's a cane stoner cafe, that's what that cafe is.
So this rotary is now completed?
Yes, yes.
That's the bubble that's in the middle of it? Are there any plans submitted for that?
Any plans submitted for what?
Because I don't, I'm showing something there, but it looks good, but.
No, it's not just, I agree, it's not labeled, but it's shown in the square there, on the original drawing and a marked-up drawing, it's just not labeled.
What you're, what's built, what's built in black corresponds precisely to what was.
But it wasn't built before winter.
Well, that thing's been built for three years.
It has, but I.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's part of the master.
I go to canes, I look up the hill, and I says, there's water squirting out of the ground, on the plane you can't see.
Before you occupied till the 30, that's where it was completed, in that old entrance.
Okay. You've always had a gate up there, so you could never see it.
Okay, yeah, but that was completed. As much as we complete on the road, we try to complete with the two entrances that are for the future development.
The board have any more questions?
Yeah, Mr. Durkin, who approved the dark blue section? Were they ever approved?
Which section?
The dark blue, the darker blue section, the parking lot, and then these changes over here.
The parking, temporary parking, from what I understand, was never approved, and was never an agreement in place. We asked for that agreement, and I don't know.
No, there is, so Mr. Magnum could point that out, we have a license from Aggrega Industries.
As a recent.
Who's not about the dark blue?
It was always oral, from day one, we've had an oral agreement with him, but when you raised the question, we got it, we got it put in right, so.
We don't have a copy, that would help us.
Oh, we can, yeah, we can.
Yeah, we submitted it.
Sure, we submitted it, I'll take it all again.
Did you have any?
The license from Aggregated.
We're missing our planning director, he probably has it, but never passed it on, so.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
I don't, you know, if you, so there's an existing pavement, paved parking area. It shows it was built and not shown on the 219th site plan.
This is, this is, this is an important question, I want to clarify this. The white blue is parking that exists on the ground now that is temporary. We're asking the planning board to modify the parking area that you see here in purple, which was on the original parking area.
Yeah.
And allow it to be moved to where it was built.
So you would have to go back to conservation.
And then keep it there.
You'd have to go back to conservation, but I don't.
We will, we will.
We already went to conservation.
They have a problem with the temporary lot?
So who approved that?
No, you're, you're correct, we, that's going to be our, we've got to go to both places. I got to go to Concom, and I got to come here, I got to go to both places. So we got to start with one, we started with you first.
Okay, that, I believe that's the question that he's asking.
Right, but, but I want to be clear, it's an important question. In this modification request, the white blue is temporary, it will be taken away when we finish. But what we're requesting is that the dark blue is relocating this parking area, which was approved, and moving it to where you see it. Yes, we have to go back to Concom to get this same thing approved. And the obvious reason why is it allows 15 Collins to be a developable piece of property, a useful piece of property for the property owner and for the town. If not, it becomes a complicated piece to build with a, I mean, we could put buildings on, on this side and around a surface parking lot, but it just made more sense to locate the surface parking lot over the drainage structure. And the reason why it's dark blue is that that, that would be a permanent change from the planning board's point of view, when, if we get it approved by Concom. Does that answer your question, that the difference in color, that's an important question?
So you're looking to move this over here to make this developable?
Well, it's, the purp, when, when the, when the original site plan was approved, the contemplated future parking area was where the purple was shown.
Right. And it was built here temporarily, without.
No, permanently.
No, so now.
No, they're looking, you're looking to make it permanent, but it was originally built temporary?
Well, it was originally built and in not in conformance, so we're now modifying it. But rather than, but we don't want to tell you that it's being modified temporarily because that's why it's a different color blue. Instead of doing this parking, we're asking the planning board to approve the parking to be in this location on 15 instead of in this location where it was originally approved. That, that, that's a.
But you, this was, that's what you're asking tonight, but originally, this was told it was going to be temporary, correct?
No, originally, the parking was going to be put over here.
Right, it was going to be put over here. Right, it was going to be put here, but it was put here.
But you've got permission to move it down on top of what it's.
But wasn't, didn't you tell conservation at the time when you put it here that it was going to be temporary? Because it wasn't on the 19 plans, correct?
So. When Mike was working on the project, he paved over that area, temporary parking, he didn't go to conservation. Conservation called us to come in, discuss with them, but not doing that. We explained to them what was going on, and we divided them with drainage calculations and of that nature. We're going to go back to them just to finalize that, so they know it's here. One of the good things about this being here is that the detention area, the stormwater area, has been approved and built with a concrete slab, so there's no infiltration taking place there. So we actually have more infiltration, it's a conservation issue, I don't want to go into details with you guys, but we have to go back with them just to finalize that, we understand that. But what we're asking for tonight is to have this be approved as a permanent change from the site plan perspective, and we're going to go to conservation, conservation says no, and does not have it.
But they're aware of it, and they're aware of why, and they, we've given them the data as to why it does, it complies with their regulations. But we have to finish the process with them. But we also have to have the process with you. So you have to say, yeah, we, we understand you are contemplating the parking lot here, we now understand you want to move it to this location, and, you know, what we would suggest is that this is not a sea change of any significance, it works better for the, for the overall development. And, but the reason why it's in a different color blue is that when we build out the whole project, that's still going to stay. When we build out the whole project, these are going away. That's the reason why we called, we made it a different blue, because we want to suggest otherwise to you.
Thank you for that.
Anyone else with questions?
I do.
Mr. Lo.
Yeah, that 15 Collins Avenue, was that part of the initial proposal that was approved by the planning board back then?
So.
Is that final master plan, for example?
Yes, so it's, it, so the, the history is, it's shown on the original site plan in 2016 because it's where we have our stormwater detention for the project. So it had to be included as part of the project site. And it's part of the condominium that owns the entire project site. It owns, the same owner, the same condominium owns 15 Collins. So it's all physically owned by the same party, and on.
It comes down to, was it there, or was it voted by the planning board?
Yes, 15 Collins, because that's where the stormwater management system for the, for the site plan approval was originally shown. It's shown exactly where it was built.
What is the zoning on that?
Highway Sustainable Business, it's.
On both sides of Collins Ave?
Yes, exactly, yep.
Because there were three houses one time on Collins Ave, two on the right-hand side, one on the left.
I understand, that, when the zoning has that, that highway sustainable business, Article 21, that's what.
But the one in the park lot on 15 now, there's a big hole there.
That, that's over here, right.
Right.
That's because, that, that's a different story. The developer submitted plans to build a, another additional kind of building, apartment building there, went ahead, dug out the foundation, came to the planning board, submitted plans. Planning board said, well, wait a second, you, you don't, you've used up all your density, so we're not sure you could do that, and so they withdrew the plans. And we just haven't gone forward yet because that, that'll be, we'll be coming back with 15 Collins too, as soon as we figure out what we want to do.
The person who did that, are they the current owners?
Yes, yeah, it was Mike who did it.
Who did that?
Yeah, yeah, but they just dug out the hole, and they didn't proceed because they didn't get approved, that, they withdrew their plans. They didn't put any foundation in because they didn't get approved, couldn't, couldn't build it. So that's why it's, that's why it's in the state that is in, but, once we get it, we're trying to do this incrementally, once we get it figured out, we'll be back with a proposal to finish out 15 Collins so that the entire development is fully finished.
Are you on the agenda for the next conservation meeting?
No, not yet. We kind of want, we wanted to do this step first, because if you don't get by this step, there's no sense of going to the next step.
Mr. Lo.
Yeah, when, I was on town meeting when this overlay was adopted. And we were told a lot of nice things would happen up on 1, because now we wouldn't have to just rely on business, but we would have a mixed use, all right? And on this particular site, it was taught, and you have it on your plans here, the hotels. What the, what is happening with the hotels? That's a question that I get asked every time somebody tells, talks to me about this project, because that's what they remember. Now, what's happening with it?
Okay, so what's happening with the hotels, or in order of, the hospitality industry, of all the different industries, it's a microcosm industry. So you've got to have a hotel operator who, who does market studies and market demands, and they have the right capital to go ahead and build forward the hotel. The developer, for the last six years, has been trying to get that kind of user, they have not been able to get that kind of.
Why is there heavy equipment over there then?
Oh, Mike has a question.
Why, heavy equipment there?
Yeah.
Because I own the land, and we're ready to start the next phase.
Have you taken up gravel?
No, we haven't done anything in the last year up there. We haven't been doing any of that.
So the equipment's just.
Yeah, we're going to start the Matty's site, we're going to submit for a building permit this week.
By the way, that's another question, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't want to get into that, to like, because his plans are going in a park lot where a road's supposed to go, it's, that's, they're going to have to come back.
I know they are, and I'm just going to throw it out, we were promised that we were going to have, you and Matty's were going to have an agreement so that Matty's would have access to their property.
We submitted that, too.
We did.
We submitted all that also.
Yeah.
We got a release from all our banks, we were ready to record that, I just told the board, we will record that before we apply for a building permit.
Because they really need the action.
There's an easement instrument, that's not.
We said we would.
Which, that's not, right?
Yeah, we were just waiting for this, old Matty, Matty's owners, the ones, and Shet, and sign the access, reciprocal access agreement. There had to be sign-ups from some of the banks consenting to it, taking account of it. So, so we signed, we were waiting for those signatures.
So it's been fully negotiated, Mike got it signed, the TB Holdings and the Matty's owner, but it, it's there, we know you wanted it, it's been finished.
Ask me recorded, you.
Yeah.
I'd like to comment, one comment on the hotels is that, you know, the public safety people are not keen about hotels. So we've been trying to focus on this assisted living thing, and it took us the last year in court to get clarification on zoning. So me as a developer, and the best thing for my neighbors, we feel it's a better, safer place for the assisted living, and we feel that the town needs that, we did a study. It's easy to build a hotel there, and I hate to say it, fill it up with immigrants, but that's not what we want to do, I know.
Wait a minute, let me, let me. I'm on town meeting.
Yep.
Which means I'm an elected official, and we voted on that zone, okay?
Right.
That's what was presented to us. Now, if you're saying you're going to step back from that, then that's a whole different bargain. This zoning may not have passed town meeting up and down Route 1 if what was promised or put out there isn't fulfilled.
Well, I, just to, one thing, so in the same list of uses that says hotel, assisted living is listed as a specific use voted by town meeting?
If you can do an assist, assisted living there, great.
Well, that's exactly what we planned to do. Sorry about this, I didn't realize my, my phone wasn't on mute. Apologize. We'll be back on the assisted living, we'll answer every question, and, you know, but we, we got to have, we got to have the plans. You guys got to see it, you got to see the design, you got to make, you got to, you got to be satisfied that it works, satisfied that it's something that the town wants, we, we, we.
What's another modification to your?
100%, it's going to be a new filing, 100%, but the, the whole, the whole reason for doing this modification is we think, we wanted, we want to get into compliance, we want to do what you want us to do. And that is to have what's built on the ground to correspond to plans you guys have looked at and approved. And once we're done with this step, we'll, if we want to change, that's the whole point. If we ever want to change something, come here first. Well, we're letting you know that if we can finish the deal with Wingate, we are going to be proposing a change from, from what was originally approved to an assisted living. But we got to come here first, and we're going to, and we will, and we're going to present the whole thing, and you guys.
One question, you just said something, if you continue to work with Wingate.
Right.
So you don't, you're not saying that this is a done deal, you have nothing signed?
Well, that, I, as, as Susan Roberts, a different lawyer who's doing the transaction, I know that she's working on the purchase and sell agreement, and it, we expect it to be signed imminently, and then as soon as it's signed, Wingate's going to hire the professionals to do all the plans. It costs tens of thousands of dollars to work up these plans, they got to have it under agreement. But as Mike said, the, the business terms of a deal with Wingate have been agreed upon.
So, thank you for all of that information. My concern is the, with that conservation, because we have a letter from Frank McKinnon saying that, that, that you guys know, that the conservation told you that the existing paved parking area is going to have to be removed, and then they want to have movement landscaping there. This is just dated, this was dated in April. So I just would feel better myself if you guys went to conservation and cleared that up with them, because what he's saying here is that he's going to be asking you to remove that. So I don't know, for us to approve it, if he's asking you to remove it, I don't know how that works.
I don't think.
So I, I can.
I don't want to go, I don't want to.
If I can make a suggestion? If, if you guys are okay with it, what you, what you simply do is say, well, we approve it, but it's subject to approval by the conservation commission.
Under condition.
You can't do it. It's right into decision of specific condition, we would accept that condition. We understand that we have to get both boards to agree. But it's a, it doesn't matter which board you go to first, you both have to agree. From your point of view as a planning board, the question is, from a site plan, is, is the parking here or over here create any site plan issues? And we believe that it doesn't. From a Concom point of view, different issues, and we got to go before them and get them satisfied on their issues.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm just looking at Mass Map for the DOP, DEP wetlands there. It shows a wetlands just to the right of that dark blue area. Is, is there a concern with Conservation Commission in that area? I mean, I think what you said is Conservation Commission, it doesn't. Genie, did you say that letter said they, they need to move that?
Yeah, they're saying that they want all that pavement removed, and they want that out.
But they don't want anything on it.
They, there were, there are conservation concerns and issues.
That's only a suggestion from them, the planning board.
Right, but let me just tell you what the Conservation Commission, I think, why we need to go before them, have the same type of meeting. This stormwater management structure is approved by Concom. I don't think they appreciate it, it's a concrete structure. That, that structure's not going anywhere, ever. What, what they're saying is, well, you have this pavement on top with this parking. If I take the pavement and parking off, I have a concrete roof, I don't think they realize that. It's much more productive, much more productive for everyone to, rather than have a concrete slab that's the top of your, to have it have dual purposes. Let it be a concrete slab for the drainage structure, and let it be used for parking, it just makes sense. I, I think what conservation says is, well, if you remove the pavement, somehow they think there's going to be greenery or something, it's not, it's the drainage structure that they already approved.
We'll bring that up to them, though.
But in the conservation meeting, we are, I did have Frank at a site meeting, we are going to do green, more greenery, a sitting area, and different things that we're going to negotiate with the conservation to finalize that. So imperious areas, bench area, so we've been talking to them about that. So, until this gets thing, then we're going to design a plan and go to conservation to get them to sign off on it.
But for your concern, which I, if there is a condition that the board imposes, that we have to get Conservation Commission approval for anything within their jurisdiction that you guys have approved, that's an acceptable condition to us, we'll write, we'll write it right into the decision.
There any other questions? Mr. Durkin?
I mean, I, I just look at Mass Map, and I, I see, you know, DEP wetlands in the area. I'm not fully knowledgeable of the Conservation Commission letter or report. An additional item that, that is in my report is like, is this talk of as-built, and the only as-built drawing I have, it, it shows pipes, but not materials, not size, not elevation. I, I did share the email that I sent to Mr. Monshon with Tetra Tech. They expressed the same concern, that they were confused, he couldn't follow what, what was proposed. He thought that a written narrative would be helpful, and, and, you know, my suggestion is, is to the planning board is, is that Tetra Tech would be also retained with their site knowledge to review the seminal as well. He did forward me some as-built plans that he received from the engineer. It does have some information on, as-built are different, it's not really the purpose of the meeting here.
Right, exactly.
I'm just bringing it up to your attention.
I, I use, what's, what's, what you're seeing here is from a site plan point of view, it was built on the ground. It's not the same as an as-built drawing, we're not submitting the as-built drawing. We're submitting a site plan requesting the modifications that you see.
Maybe one idea, Mr. Chair, and vice chair, is possibly a site walk with the planning board and the Conservation Commission. There's a lot going on up there, there's no substitute to go into the site. But that's, that's, that's just a thought.
But there's, there's not a lot going on, the detention area in the basin's 100% complete, we're not. percent complete, we're not, and the wetlands is on Duncan Donuts' property, it's not on my land, we're just in the buffer zone. That detention area, the, the infrastructure for all that, the things that wash the soil come down the street, all that is a hundred percent complete on that end of.
I don't mean things are under construction, I mean, it's, it's a, there's a, you know, look at the plans, it's, sorry, there's a lot there.
Yeah, but all the hoods are on, everything that Tetra Tech has to do is a hundred percent complete. We certified all the attached bases, they've been cleaned, it's not everything.
Well, let me just admit, the, the project's there functioning fine for the last three, four years. It's not, it's, it's there, it's fully built, you, you know it's there, and, and, and this is.
So, this, just, just, I understand what you're saying. This here is a plan review, we're not, we're not under the gun to answer this tonight, just so you understand.
Well, you're not under the gun to answer tonight, but.
If, if Mr. Durkin thinks a site view is going to help the board, to help you to move forward, then I would suggest that we do one.
Okay. The planning board's going to do what the planning board wants. I'm, I'm just suggesting that.
Well, and I understand, you gave us a lot of information tonight that we didn't have, that helped move us forward.
Okay. If, if, if you read the application, if you read the plans, I don't think I said anything tonight that wasn't in writing to the planning board before tonight. I'm happy to present it, I, I think it's valuable, but it's not that.
As you know, everyone's interpretation is different. So, my interpretation was one thing, Larry's is another, Bill has another, so.
That's why we have a public hearing, that's why we have a public hearing.
Maybe it can be explained out in the field at a site view. This is something altogether new.
Mr. Burden, I mean, Mr. Chair, could we hear from Jesse on this?
I believe that if Mr. Mr. Charlie Schuman would like to comment.
Sure, Mr. Chair. So, just confirming what, what the applicant representatives testified tonight, there was a meeting with the applicants and representatives from the town, I was in attendance at the meeting, and there was a series of letters back and forth between Tetra Tech representing the town and the applicant representatives addressing a number of items. And the application that's before you tonight represents a significant item that the town have requested, specifically correcting some of the, the items on the previously approved master plan and site plan that were not built, and other elements that were built without permission, as Attorney Feldman outlined to you tonight. His presentation tonight I found helpful, because it explained, at least to me, something that was not clear from the application, which was the status of the hotels, as says Attorney Feldman, I thought may be clear tonight, there is no hope to modify that portion of the approved plan at this juncture, so the planning board does not need to take into consideration this living facility or the lack of commercial use that would be associated with the missing hotels at this stage. What I heard tonight from, from Mr. Durkin is that he recommends a sidewalk, he recommends additional time for his review, as well as a review by Tetra Tech. Based on that, if the board is inclined to, to get Tetra Tech's feedback on this submission, I would recommend that you take a vote to retain Tetra Tech as the peer reviewer for this application, and to request the applicant provide funding for that review. Just some additional notes for the board's consideration, as you, as you proceed with your review of the project, this being a request for, for modification of an approved site plan and master plan, there's no time standards for which you're bound to issue a decision. I would recommend that the board be guided with the concept of reasonableness in your review of the project and the proposed changes, but there's no specific timeline that you have to make a decision by, and there's no constructive approval. Additionally, with respect to the plan itself, the board should be aware that you're not authorized to approve any modifications outside of the limits of this property, so I would recommend that if, if you're considering the issue of off-site parking, you can consider that in your decision whether to approve the modified parking, but that parking may need to be approved by this board or other commissions or boards of the town separately and apart from your review of this specific project. Additionally, as, as you're continuing to review this and as Tetra Tech is reviewing it, I would recommend you get their view regarding the compliance of this project with the current zoning requirements, which are applicable to this site, based on the duration of time that has passed since this project was approved, and the modifications to the Business Highway Sustainable Development District that have been enacted by the town since this project was approved. Specifically, and I haven't, I don't know the, the current requirements for parking off the top of my head, that's something I would, I would recommend you take a look at, and have Tetra Tech issue a recommendation on that point as to whether the, the site complies with the current parking requirements for that. Apart from that, Mr. Chair, if you're inclined to continue tonight, I would recommend you take a vote to do that, but I don't have a recommendation specifically whether you should.
First, I'd like to get a motion from the board to, I thank you for that, Mr. Charlie Schuman, that we bring Tetra Tech back on for review of this, what has been presented to the board this evening.
Mr. Chair, I think we can make sure all, all of us.
Oh, sorry. This is a public hearing, does anyone like to get up and speak in favor or against what has been presented to the board this evening? Hearing none? What's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to retain Tetra Tech for their, go ahead. Your attention.
I was just going to mention, before we load up the modification, that we have a site visit to this project.
We could do that.
You can do that.
We could still do that.
Do that after his motion.
All right, go ahead.
So, my motion is to retain Tetra Tech for their input in consideration for this modification of the site plan review and the master plan, and let the applicant pay for those services.
I get a second?
You want to put an amount down? What would you, Jesse, do you recommend the amount?
My recommendation would be that you get a estimate from Tetra Tech.
Get an estimate?
That's okay.
To get an estimate from Tetra Tech? Second motion.
Could we have the motion read back, please? Someone make, you're making a motion, right?
Yep.
He has me repeat it.
Sure.
We have it.
Repeat the motion.
Sure, so my motion is to retain Tetra Tech for their input in consideration for this modification, for the modification to the site plan review, and that the applicant, that we obtain a vote from Tetra Tech so that the applicant can be to pay for those services.
Second?
You second? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five to zero. Before we put an amount of what's going to be required, I'd like to speak to Tetra Tech, see what the, what his requirement's going to be to, to look at this. So, there will be a fee that'll be attached to them coming on, paid by the applicant. Mr. Durkin?
Mr. Chair, when we spoke with Tetra Tech today, he, he did said he would provide a quote, and I think in the absence of Mr. Riley, who probably would coordinate that for the board, if you, if you would like, I will coordinate with, with Tetra Tech to get a written proposal with a cost for the, to be reviewed.
We can discuss, we can discuss that.
Okay.
I'm just asking the applicant if he has any thing he'd like to say about.
Yeah, so, in the hope that we're not going to have a controversy about whether or not we think Tetra Tech's fees are reasonable.
That's why, before I tell you an amount.
That's right, right, so.
I'm going to ask them to present a proposal.
But I think, right, but I think, when, if you're going to ask Tetra Tech to present a proposal, I think you have to describe to them the scope. What, what this is about is whether the items that were shown as, originally shown to be built, and that were not built, and whether the items that were built that were not, you know, are, are material to the site plan.
Well, the board, the board wants to see, says a site visit, the board can determine that, we won't leave that up to.
Okay, well, so then if that's the case, Tetra Tech has already, just so you know.
Tetra Tech's already gone through the whole site, yeah.
Tetra Tech has painstakingly, we've had.
Yeah, we're only asking them to look at what they're proposing here, not the whole site as a whole, because he's already done that. They just came back with sixty.
So, that's why I said, it's best for us to get a proposal to see what he's going to do.
Yeah, I just.
If it's, if it's been done, it's been done.
Okay.
I'm not going to pay twice, and I don't want Mr. Dushet to pay twice.
Okay, so, thank you, so, thank you, so if you could just remind.
Maybe you could help us narrow that scope.
We don't have Tetra Tech.
With the first. Would you be able to do that?
Typically, Tetra Tech's review in a situation like this would be compliance with applicable state, federal, local ordinances, laws, regulations, et cetera, including the Business Highway Sustainable District.
Okay, okay. Just for the record, I disagree that it's not this board germane to be determining compliance with federal law, and us paying a review engineer to do that. So, maybe the way to resolve this is, when you have a request for proposal that you're going to send to Tetra Tech for them to give you a proposal back, if you want to get it over to Rich, that we can look at the request for proposal and give you suggestions, so we have a meeting of the minds on it, we're happy to do that.
Does anyone here have any, any info from Tetra Tech from what they've given? I completed, I, when they did the, when Tetra Tech did the walkthrough.
Yeah, he gave us a report, we got that, you were at that meeting.
Okay.
That, that's what that meeting is.
We, we have, we have multiple rounds of letters where we responded, they responded, we responded, and we, we keep on getting to the point where Tetra Tech says, we're satisfied, we're satisfied, we're satisfied.
Well, you said there was like five items that were left, at least.
Well, what was left was, we'd like, we think you should go to the planning board and show them the variances between the ASBIL, or what's been built on the ground, I shouldn't use the term ASBIL, what's been built on the ground and what was previously approved, and seek modification. That's, that's one of the items that, that we were asked to do, that's, and we said we would do it, and that's why we're here.
A suggestion is, is Tetra Tech provide a written scope and fee, and agree to, and it's provided to the applicant for review.
That's fine.
And, and, once, once, once everyone's in agreement, and, with, with the scope and fee, then, then we proceed.
It's okay, that, that, that works too. We just don't want you to hire Tetra Tech to start doing things and to have a fight with you about paying them.
We, we understand. So, in lieu of time, you said you wanted a site visit, so, could we do that, schedule that like right away?
I mean, I.
And then, maybe you guys could get on the agenda for the nineteenth, we meet again on the twentieth, maybe you could get on the Conservation Committee for the nineteenth. If you have to do that, get that out of the way. They meet the day before. I'm just suggesting that. So, a site visit, did you make a motion for a site visit?
Move that we have a site visit to the Essex Landing site, which time is, is everybody available? Saturday morning?
Saturday morning.
You're looking at the one of Saturday?
It's supposed to be Friday, isn't it?
Is it? Saturday, the, yeah, actually. Saturday, Saturday, this Saturday? You do it this Saturday morning?
Yep, if you can't do it Saturday morning, you want to do a weekday or something, or you work, you can't, you can't do a weekday.
I can't do this Saturday, I have a employee who can't work, and I can't cover it, so I'm going to go ahead. Sunday?
Wednesday evening, in the evening, or after five o'clock, it's like.
Goes to church.
Up to church?
I can honestly say, I don't think I've ever seen him there. I don't want to throw you under the bus, but.
Anyway.
Wednesday the twelfth?
Wednesday the twelfth.
What, what's the schedule?
On Wednesday the twelfth, he, maybe five to five.
Five o'clock, can everybody do a Wednesday at five?
That works for me, the twelve?
Yeah.
Five, the earlier the better, but, you know, you guys have limitations.
What's the earliest anybody can get there on Wednesday, the twelfth?
Four o'clock for me.
Five?
What time do we set?
Five?
Five o'clock, Wednesday the twelfth?
Five o'clock.
That works for me.
Does that work for you?
Sure, that's great, where would the meetings probably? Bottom of the hill or top, John?
Right in the parking lot.
We could go right in the parking lot.
Okay, just so we're not all looking for each other.
Yeah.
Parking lot on fifteen.
Fifteen columns.
Fifteen columns, perfect.
Did you come up the hill, it's the first one on the right?
That's where I'm going.
Right?
You, you better make that suggestion, I can't.
All right, do we vote that?
I'm not on the board.
All right, Bob, make a motion.
Motion on that one? On the site visit?
June twelfth, like five o'clock or four o'clock?
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock, June twelfth, five o'clock.
I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. It'll be Wednesday the twelfth to five o'clock.
Thank you, that'll, that'll help me.
And you need a motion to continue this, this was a public hearing, right?
It is a public hearing, so I need a motion to.
No, you're not going to close it?
No, it's not going to close.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to the nineteenth?
Do I get a second to continue?
Twentieth, sorry.
Twentieth or nineteenth?
Twentieth.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Nancy, did you get the, the date on that?
Did you just repeat today?
We continue to the June twentieth.
Wednesday, June twelfth. June, what?
June twentieth is the next meeting, and then.
That's right, so it's on the agenda for June twentieth.
Yes, and then the site visit's going to be June twelfth.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, we're in for a, we're ready to pull it. An informal discussion on the preliminary subdivision of the Essex Landing. Attorney Feldman?
Right, so, we submitted a preliminary subdivision. The sole purpose of submitting this preliminary subdivision is to freeze the applicable zoning for the property shown on the plan to the date of when the plan was submitted, which was before the recent town meeting and before the recent change that was just adopted by town meeting to change the density requirement another time for purposes of residential development. So, that's its sole purpose. We're showing a fully compliant cul-de-sac that would be.
Can we just back up for one second before you go forward?
Sure.
Just as an understanding, you submitted the plan before town meeting voted, but there was no hearing before.
Doesn't matter, what, but the data submission is what counts.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that.
So, right.
Are we correct in that?
Yeah, so, so, the, what we submitted was a fully conforming cul-de-sac road that fully complies with all of your subdivision regulations. It's shown here, right here, this plan creates these two lots, this subdivision road will never be built. It's going to be approved, it's never going to be built. And this lot line that's making this division will not be recorded at the Registry of Fees, dividing it into superethr lots, because it's going to remain in the common ownership that it is. The sole purpose of the plan is to walk in the zoning on this parcel for eight years that we're entitled to under law. It may help the planning board, because you may remember that we did, we did the exact same thing, when I say we, I as counsel, on behalf of a different property owner, 860 Broadway, did exactly the same thing. We ended up having the planning board approve a definitive subdivision plan, which has never been used, it's never going to be used, but its sole purpose is for zoning protection. It's exactly what's going on here, so.
I'm, I'm, I won't comment on that, but I just want to say, I'm not sure that was the correct thing from the planning board, but we'll.
Okay, well.
What happened before may not happen again, I'm just.
Well, then, then.
I'm just, just saying.
Fair enough, so.
But that, that'll be up to the board to decide.
Hundred percent. So, this is a preliminary plan.
Yeah.
So, what happens with a preliminary plan is you either approve it, and we'll be back within seven months with a definitive plan, or if you don't approve it, you state with particularity all of the reasons in which this plan does not comply with your subdivision rules and regulations. So, you can identify every way we don't comply. According to our engineer, we comply with every single one, so we don't expect you to be able to come up with one, but here's your opportunity, tell us what it is, so that when we submit to the. the definitive plan, we'll correct it with that submission. So this really is a very quick.
So this hasn't been advertised, correct?
Doesn't have to be advertised. If you don't, if you don't vote on this within 45 days, it's deemed approved, and we'll be back. It has, the approval of a preliminary plan has no legal effect. The denial, you have to tell us why, what rules and regulations we didn't comply with, so we can fix it when we come in with a definitive plan. So whatever you wanna guys do tonight, you can do. It has no legal, legal effect on our definitive plan that we're gonna be filing within seven months. It's just a necessary step that we have to do under law.
I, I. Mr. Long asked me if I received his plan. I have it electronically. I don't have a printed copy with me. My, my comment in the engineer report is, is just to propose work, clarify in writing these proposed and those existing additions to information in the applicable.
Can you hear us? Can you speak up?
Sorry. I, I, you know, I'm not clear what's being proposed. I think I proposed work. Please clarify in writing what is being proposed, what existing additions to the information in the applicable, I meant to say application attached, updates for attachments. So.
I don't know how, I don't know what more we can do. We're proposing a cul-de-sac subdivision in the location of column we have shown on this plan, and I'm telling you, it's never gonna be built. So do with it whatever you like. I don't know how much, I, I don't know how to make it clearer than that. I don't know how to make it clearer than, than filling out the application that you wanted us to fill out. So I don't, I don't know what more I could, I could do to respond to Mr. Durk and to make it clearer.
I personally would like time to review.
Mr. Shaw?
So for the preliminary subdivision process, the board is not required to take any action. You can approve, you can deny, you can send your hands. The only thing that your action would do is determine the timeframe for them to submit their, they're required to submit a preliminary plan at least 45 days prior to submitting a definitive subdivision plan. If the board takes no action, they can file the definitive at any time. It doesn't have to be a three-year time. So if you're inclined to continue, there's no need for you to take a vote to approve or deny the plan tonight. It doesn't affect us. This is already well noted. What they will do with the definitive plan, they'll, they'll come back when they're, they're ready to.
So what would be the downside to approving?
My recommendation would not be to approve, because that could be taken as a precedent that you have approved this proposed subdivision. If Mr. Feldman's candor regarding the developer's intent of this plan is refreshing, but your approval of a subdivision plan would, in theory, allow the development of this plan. So if there are concerns that the board members have, or Mr. Durk has about the cul-de-sac as they're proposing to do here, it would not want to simply approve.
Jesse, if you just want clarification, would you agree that if they deny it, they have to state the reasons for denial?
My recommendation is that the board is not required to take any action.
Not to take any action.
Correct.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. See you Wednesday.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have motion on the table, post-public hearing, or two?
It's not a one. It's not a public hearing.
It's an informal discussion.
Informal.
It's an informal discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to deny.
Thank you, sir.
Based on the fact that we don't, the board doesn't require to take action.
No, not to deny.
We're just, not to take any action.
To deny.
You can, you can take, you can deny, you can take no action.
Take no action.
You can also defer taking a decision, that you're not required to do that tonight.
We can defer.
You can defer making a decision.
I don't have enough, enough presented to make a decision, so. It's just, it's just that I need a motion. Need a motion to not to take any action on what has been presented to us.
Someone?
What, second? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero, not to take any action. Done.
Okay, next we have continued public hearing.
The next is a continued public hearing on Ox Lane, definitive subdivision approval extension. The applicant here?
How you guys doing? Fabio Feria, owner of 223 Walnut Street.
You gotta speak up.
Fabio Feria from 223 Walnut Street. We're gonna be talking about the topo plan, right? Yep. I'm here for asking for the definitive subdivision of, oh, I'm sorry, of the, the 223 Walnut Street that it seems to be already expired. So though, that plan that you guys have in hand, it's according to exactly done the way, I forgot his name.
Chris Riley.
Yeah, Chris Riley asked and sent the, he just sent a email to Peter, which is the engineer that did the plans. So whatever is there, it's whatever he asked it. So it's highlighted. I remember he asked it in red, but Peter just kind of missed that part. But if you take a look on, it's a, a kind of a different color. I don't, I don't know what it is that, like a dark gray on the, on the perimeter of the, the whole property that shows the, the wall, the elevations. Plans are pretty clear. It shows the, the house, the concrete papers walkways, the front of the house with concrete steps, the pool in the back, some trees, the road that was done probably, I don't know, two years ago, inspected. And it shows the, the, the wall on the construction that we stopped when you guys asked like two, three meetings ago, I don't remember exactly all, on the 225 side. It stops right on the line. You see that there is a line crossing the existing shed?
Which, which plans are you guys looking at?
The topo.
The as-built or the?
Yeah, the as-built.
The as-built?
One John has.
Yep. That one. If you, if you take a look on, or between both properties, the, the shed is existing in structure on the 225, there is a line crossed around the middle that's, that shows, I mean, we, we, we are just waiting on a historical commission to approve the demolition of these shed. Shed's not gonna be, we, we're not gonna use anymore. So, and it shows like a little previous about the, the next one, which is gonna be the A and R. If you take a look on the line of the property, the, the, the lower line before the meter lines, the meter line of the shed, it shows a lot line to be removed. That's the one that's gonna go on that straight line where the shed is. We're taking down the shed and the wall. We'll just finish it up on that line.
So how many square feet would that give you on the house off front?
Ah, it's, yeah, it's showing on A and R. Twenty thousand five hundred eighty-five, I think. Yeah, twenty thousand five hundred fifty-eight.
Okay.
Thousand square feet.
And where does this plan derive from?
Was it again?
This is from Hays, but there's no, there's no stamp on this plan from Hays.
This plan right here? The, the topo?
This one here. Or you just said refer to the other plan?
Let me see if you have the same I have.
Building permit plan, 225 Walnut Street.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just from Hays Engineering, but there's no.
No, no, that one, that one was done by, this is the plan that I submitted and gave to Nancy.
My plan, I copied different things on it from different phases of the project, so I could understand what happened.
Actually, I, I want to point that you, you kind of, you mixed up everything. So all those A and R, that the subdivision that you put in the plans, it, it's not a matter right now. That's for the previous meeting that I got denied through the setbacks of the shed. I decided to just demolish it. And this is the new, if you don't have it, you can.
I'll, I'll go up to the.
Yeah. This is the correct one.
Yep.
And answering, I know we're gonna go through that, because he put in a comment over there that approve it subdivision for 2005, whatever. I don't, I don't have those plans. He was mentioning about the, the, the wetland, and he requested a notice of intent, which it doesn't make any sense, because if you take a look on the left bottom of the, of the, the wall, you see that my wall was constructed inside of the buffer zone. I'm not on a conservation. Inside, all right, outside, yeah. Outside of buffer zone. It is inside of my property on the, on the bottom left, right here. This is the buffer zone right here. My wall. Yeah, conservation is on that side.
To the left.
Yep.
On, over here on this side.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clear, no, not here, on the other plan. I'm just clearing out the question that he did it. So this is, that is a wetland down there. So by the law, I'm allowed to construct anything inside of, as long as I get approved, inside of this line. Because if I cross these line like I wanted before, the wall would be something, maybe fifteen more feet on the inside, and then I had to have a notice of intent from the conservation.
Have you shown Mr. Conservation?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I had so much meetings with Frank on the past. He knows exactly. Actually, I mentioned on the first meeting, he was the one that saved my ass, to be honest with you, because the, the engineer previous did a wall that was gonna come like this. And I didn't know exactly what was going on. We were just gonna construct, right? And then Frank and Ben showed up one day in this meeting, and then he talked about this. So we changed the plans. You resupped me, and I put the wall inside of the, the land, out of the buffer zone, to make sure I didn't have to go for notice of intent or any.
Did you get any comment from conservation?
Yeah.
Mr. Turpin? Yeah, I could mention in my email that I cite in the engineer's report to, to the engineer, to this engineer and to Fabio on the fifth, I did ask for a copy of the notice of intent document to the com. He would have, I assume would have had, you must have that.
We don't need to. We don't need a note of, a, a notice of intent.
Let me just ask.
I was approved by, my father was with me on the day. What Frank asked me to do it was just like, he said, "Don't go over the buffer zone, because you're gonna get in trouble, because sagas doesn't own these. It doesn't even belong to you guys. It's a, a lien. Lien owns the back of my property."
I understand that.
No, no, I, I, I'm just saying. Then he told me, "I, you better call your engineer, remove the wall, bring the wall out of the buffer zone, because that way you don't need nothing, just the approval by the city." So that's why, if you take a look on that line, as long as I'm not crossing the line, I don't need a notice, a, a notice of intent to build a wall or any other kind of structure there.
Forty-one point nine feet. This is. No, this is the, this is the kind of a buffer zone. So this is probably one of his edge. So that's a delineating line. I don't want. I don't know. Larry, an engineering question if I may? Is a forty-one point nine feet to the edge of the house, what is this line here that need?
I, I'm, I'm not sure. Is this his property limit? That may be his property limit. And I can, I can show you a mass mapper, because it shows that.
Does it show that it's outside?
That's what it looks like to me. It's, that's his property.
My initial look is, is from the mass map of wetlands, is, is he is outside of those, the hundred foot.
Yeah, can I, can I explain that line to you? What happened is.
No, no, no.
I determined it to be a property line?
Yeah, yeah. No, no. You're talking about the, the forty-one point nine?
Yeah.
And the other side. So the forty-one point nine means my foundation was built forty-one point nine from my line. My lot goes through that line, but the buffer zone has nothing to do with that line. The buffer zone, it's a, it's like a, a ghost line created by the, whoever do that, that it gets from the wetland. So the wetland is far away from my land. It's all the way down on the back. So that line, the hundred-foot buffer zone is hundred feet from whatever is considered wetland. So that's what that means. The forty-one point nine is just like the, the instruction of the foundation. It shows how many feet that corner is from the lot line. That's a setback.
So, so we have, we have, one second. We have no way to compare what was approved in 2005. The only way, the only one that can, I think, really get that would be you from, from the registry of deeds?
Yeah, as far as, as far as I spoke with Chris and we, so he was the one that said, to, the, the original ones that I have, the property 223 was approved for a single family, and with the Hawks Hill Road, which was done accordingly and inspected by Todd, actually was the first thing that was done before the development of that house, because sit-ups sagas, and actually, not sit-ups sagas, on the, on the planet, I'm sorry, on the planning board, on the planning board comments when you guys approved back 2005, was saying. was saying clear uh, there that the road, the Hawks Hill Road, headed to be uh, done and minimum blinded before we start any type of development here. So I got, I got that advice from then, when I started, he, we went over everything, so we did the road and then I started construction, so the house been there for, uh, constructed already, uh, for almost two years. I've been living on our house for nine months of, uh, already. And the, the purpose here is, everything was done accordingly, uh, inspected, but you, uh, because of the wall, you personally asked that I had it, the, the, everything redone and then he said it's supposed to be a topo, uh, just like these plans, uh, to show what was not approved back then.
What did you submit to the planning board, I mean to the uh, inspectional services on that wall?
Yeah, they, they have all.
This is why I'm saying it'd be nice to have the old, the old plan, if I recall, said that that was supposed to have been sloped excavation from the back of your house down to the buffalo land.
You, you're talking about the two thousand five one?
I, I believe that, that's why I asked.
Yeah, the two thousand five one, uh, it, there was a wall over there, the only.
That's what, back then when they approved the subdivision, that's what they approved. You've made a change by putting up a ten twelve foot wall in place of that slope.
Uh, I, I'm not familiar with that is low because uh, the, the, the only thing that was uh, uh, changed here was the, the elevation of the wall, because otherwise I, my house would be probably what? Thirty feet uh, from the, 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 the pavement, uh, Hawk Hill Lane, I would be in a sinkhole. So the reason to build this wall was to bring up the elevation and get more flat. I still like probably, if you take a look on the beginning of the road, which is uh, nine one uh, point eight.
You brought fill-in.
Yeah, yeah, I had it, I had it everything.
Do you have a permit fill-in?
I, I, everything was inspected and you can talk with uh, some of the questions that uh, he made it, I didn't answer because that will be I, I S D. Because if you guys want the copy of the permit, the copy of the permit of the wall, uh, everything that it's attached it, all the cards and everything that was done over there, you gotta be with the I C D because I don't have that on file. They do have, if you go there.
You can get it from them, right?
I can, as long as I.
You have a structural drawing on the twelve?
Oh yeah, everything, yeah, everything, everything was sent uh, to uh, to uh, uh, Dan and Michael. Everything was sent to them, I, I go.
One second.
So tonight he's just looking to, to extend his subdivision, right?
To, to extend the subdivision.
Yeah, actually it should get a definitive, right?
We have no idea what was approved on the first subdivision, so we don't know what to change.
If we extend it, we can have a front package, I mean if we, if we extend subdivision, he would then need approval before they get occupancy, we would have to, he would have to provide subdivision uh, as well to the board, right?
That's what I brought today, this is the Asville.
So, well, the house isn't done yet, correct?
No, I'm living over there for a year, everything was inspected.
This is still for the first house?
Yep.
Well, it's a combination of two. Originally, he didn't have a hundred foot frontage to make this an acceptable lot. He's moving the shit, he's adding frontage to it.
Oh, no, no, I do have, the line, the line is saying twenty-eight point nine, or twenty-five point eight.
I, I, I just said to him, you, by moving that line, you've created your frontage.
No, I added the frontage already, by, by moving that, I'm just getting a, a little bit of land, that's it. That's the only thing I want, a little bit more is space as a side yard, which I don't have much, that's it.
But it was, if you didn't move it, you were gonna create an undersized lot, correct, that's why he has to.
No, he had.
No, no, that's, the purpose is not for a lot.
What he tried to do before was to create, and Bob picked up on it, is the angles are not allowed.
Which then created an undersized lot.
Which made the front an undersized lot.
Yeah, the purpose was, uh, when me and my father, we started the construction of a two twenty-five, uh, we calculate, we, we are talking about money that we don't have. We calculate the shed as being uh, something, he said, you can, you can just get the shed for you. I just wanted storage, I was gonna keep this shed.
I think you can afford a new shed.
No, I can't.
No, we can't, uh, you were, you were missing understand what you guys are trying to say because I'm a hard, I'm a hard worker, I work twelve to fourteen hours every day. And definitely, I'm, 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 listen, I'm hustling my ass to pay my mortgage, trust me. Uh, probably I'm a little more, maybe I have more courage than other people. If I really think about my situation, I shouldn't have a house big like that. But actually, we built that with the purpose as well, we are, we are business owner and I wanted maybe to get a, a, a postal card to kind of get more business, which we are getting, thank God for that. So we are a small business, we're a small company, we don't make that much of money. But just to clear that, the shed was something that I wanted this space, that's it. And he said, you can get it, so I talked with the engineer, we did a, a, a line to get the shed and then you guys didn't approve, so, because it was a weird line. Now, we straight up the line, we still have in the, the, the twenty thousand five hundred square feet, which is the, 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 the regulations for shed.
We're not keeping the shed because.
Yeah, shed is gonna be demolished.
You have to, let your dad come to the podium?
Yes, we're not keeping the shed, just complete, just saying your name, um, Josiah.
My, uh, my name is Josiah and I'm his father, he is my brother, he is also my partner in business partner. So, uh, we're not keeping the shed for two reasons. One, because it's way too big and it would cost us like a hundred thousand dollars to, to bring it up to the, uh, look like the same houses that, because it, it will be an eyesore in, in there. So, that, that's why we tearing down, so we're not keeping, and if we.
So, so, you've stated earlier, just as a technicality, that you have to go to the historic to find out if you can tear it?
Yeah, that's a lot of stuff.
It's been under process already, Michael called me uh, two days ago saying that the only thing we need to tear down the shed is just the last email being coming from the, the, just to make sure that the shed is not uh, historical thing.
So, we try to keep the shed on his property, I would give it to him. But you guys never approved it, right?
Right.
We, we fine with that, so now we're not gonna keep it because it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars just to rebuild it, just to keep it nice and clean, that, that's it, so.
So, and then by taking the, 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 the shed out, which we already applied, we paid for the, we paid the fees, everything is in the process for about, I think, four weeks, I would say. Uh, on the second meeting that, because this is the third, on the second meeting that I came here, I already, I, I had it applied for the, the, the demo of the shed already. That's something that uh, we really wanna tear down. Because we don't have the money to keep up the shed on the same look that the back houses and like comparing to the front one, it's gonna be a huge eyesore. That everybody that goes there say, why, why don't demo that? And actually, the, the, the shed itself, it's in a really, really, really bad condition over there. Uh, team hockey is, the, the, the house itself on the front, we couldn't even like save a wall of the foundation because he, everything was like falling apart. So we de- we decided to get a permit to uh, build the other house and, as I mentioned, I don't have the money, so I call him, I call him, so we put all of us three together so we could buy the, the, the land. And then we got the loan approved it on our company, which is easier, it's not even under my name. And uh, the reason for today is that topo plan.
One second.
Hold on, I think.
I'm sorry.
Why don't we just extend the subdivision and then just have him come in with A and R plan, which will provide enough space for that building that's on the front?
Yeah, the A and R is right there.
And why, we didn't extend the subdivision, right?
That's what we're doing, that's, that's what this is.
Get into this one first.
We did that over on uh, off Essex Street very quickly, why are we going through all this? I mean, it, it would have been a very fast.
This is basically for.
Twenty minutes ago.
This A and R is to, to make it.
That's separate though, first we just extend.
There's two, there's two things.
Mine doesn't say A and R, the color is on the right here, but you have to.
Chair, I think there were two things.
Two things on it.
You required an Asville plan.
That's correct.
Um, to, to accept changes from the original two thousand five plan, that's the purpose of this.
Yeah.
And then there's a second item on the agenda, I.
The last one.
In the engineer's report, I sent email on this and I, I, my, my first, my item number one I gave Genie Cop is just, it's just the walls are constructed, is there documentation with, with inspectional?
Yeah, 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 everything is there, uh, if you talk with uh, either uh, Michael or Dan, everything was inspected, approved, uh, everything that is on the property right now was clearly approved and, and inspected. The only, the only reason for the, the, the topo, which they really did a great job on that one because it shows even the, 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 the tree on the side, uh, the purpose was because you, you wanted to see what was not on the two oh five plan, which was the wall, which is right there right now. Showing the wall line.
What, what we were looking for, was the qualification to the subdivision, what was granted to you?
I, I don't, I don't know, to be honest with you, I think uh, on the email that I received from uh, 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 Nancy, uh, on the agenda is saying uh, uh, definitive, uh, definitive subdivision approval. That's why, that's why I'm here for. Because uh, I had it, was just a misunderstood, trust me, everything would be, everything would be really, really on the paper and clarify with you guys if I knew I had it to go to this process, yeah.
I'd like to speak to Tom attorney, or our attorney.
Yep.
Do you understand what I'm asking, Jesse?
I don't.
Okay, so there was a subdivision plan that was granted that they were supposed to follow back in two thousand and five. He kept coming, bringing it, Mr. Hawk kept coming back before all the planning boards to put an extension. I mean, he did what he was supposed to do, without knowledge to the board.
That plan had one house on it though.
There was, there was three, there was one house on three lots. He sold up the furthest lot down the bottom of the hill. He then sold the back lot to this gentleman here. And then left town and sold it and left Fabio holding the bag of goods.
Yep.
But he's not on record as being the person for the subdivision.
Who's not, this gentleman?
This gentleman, yes. So it gets a little complicated.
Does the, does the town have the, have a bond for the subdivision road?
I don't know. I have no idea. This is why I'm asking, if, if he has what's been filed with the registry of deeds for an approval, that it would help the board move forward. So if he has the two thousand and five declaration, whatever the board voted in, whatever they approved on the subdivision, would, would help this board because he's already made changes on the wall on the back.
Yeah, just, just the wall.
The wall doesn't, the wall doesn't really have anything to do with subdivision, that's, that's what was.
But he's made a change to what was presented, I don't know why it was sloped, but now we have a twelve foot wall.
What I would say is, I, I wouldn't concern yourself with a wall for a subdivision approval. The subdivision approval is, is really just about creation of the subdivision road to ensure that you got access to the lots, as long as that's provided, I think you can, you can extend the subdivision now. The wall may be a separate issue with, with building department, I don't think you need to worry about that for subdivision.
So at this time, would you entertain a motion to approve the extension of the subdivision?
I would. Are you making a motion?
So.
Can I get a second? I second, wish of the board?
The motion is what?
To approve the subdivision, that's, as it's presented?
The extension.
The extension of the subdivision.
That's just one mark, we're both.
This is just to, an extension to give him the extension of the subdivision to move forward.
Oh yeah, I was supporting the extension of the subdivision. And that, supporting the A and R plan, because right now he's got a house with a lot, that's not really a lot. Because with the, that's the subdivision.
Until this is, until this is.
Expired, uh, the second lot, the second house that's sitting over there, is sitting on one big lot.
Right.
So, I made my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Well, I've got, motion's been made, I got a second, what's the wish of the board?
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
We've given you greater due, an extension on the subdivision.
Next agenda is the A and R.
And now we, what we have is the A and R.
The A and R.
And, and one comment, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Durkin?
I think my recommendation of the purpose plan was to show what was different from two thousand and five. This does, for an A and R, when the, for Asville, when the project is done, this does not comply to that. When the whole project is done, I'll need a.
Yep.
I'll need an A and R that complies with, with the.
So you, you were talking about getting the same, what you have on that part here on the front, okay.
And if they're happy, I, I need that at the end.
No, no, definitely, definitely.
So what this, this creates here, this, this A and R, is, is it creates him the property between the two pieces of property?
Do you, do you need, I, do you need, do you need to formally close this and move to the next item? It's a procedural question.
Yes.
Do we need a, we need a motion to close that first hearing?
Subdivision, continue public hearing, I'll make a motion to close public hearing with the Hawk Hill Lane.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero, first hearing is closed.
Thank you, Larry.
Now we move up to the A and R. Has everyone had a chance to redo it? Does anyone have any questions?
Chair and the vice chair an email I sent on the.
I already looked it over on.
I already. I already sent a year ago. Another email to Peter to answer your questions.
This is just my, my written response to the engineer and to Fabio on the A and R.
Uh, some of them will be with the I C, I, I S D.
Let, let the, let the chair open and direct this, please.
That's for the topo or for the subdivision?
We're already open, right?
It's not a public hearing?
No. I'm gonna call, Larry? Anyone understand what's there?
Our A and R is just to make sure that it meets all the.
It's the other plan?
Just to, just the purpose of the A and R is just to make sure that it's all.
It's just the size of the lots, the size of the lots.
And without check, going on the lock line change, that line is not changed, right? It's all furnished?
So once this gets filed, it will be changed.
It meets all the.
Nothing right now conforms to what they did until this is changed.
So when is that, when?
This is, this will get filed if it's approved by the board.
But you, you're content that it meets all the.
Excuse me.
You, you're content that.
Let me ask Larry, so he's got some issues.
But his issues, did they affect our approval?
I don't know if they would have affected him.
It's his issue, it should be separate from ours, his would be held contingent.
Well, he's the representative of the board, so.
Hey, I, I can summarize this in my email, um.
Yeah, my, my only concern was, Jesse, maybe you could answer, um, any issues that are outstanding with Larry, wouldn't be contingent on our approval of the A and R, correct, or would they be?
Well, I, I think that's up to the board, it looked like, peruse your comments, Larry, and it looked like they were technical.
So I asked Larry to look at this, to see if it was approved, this is, he, he is the engineer and he asked up to have a look, so I'm gonna ask Larry if he sees any issues at this time with the A and R. I'm gonna ask Larry if he sees any issues at this time with the A and R.
So, should I proceed? I, I think, I sent an email to the applicant, and I sent a few copies out to everyone. And I just reviewed what was in the subdivision rules and regs, and I went at each item. I think, you know, the, the, I, item one is submission of a plan. I think, I don't know, we didn't get a Form A for the original, for the previous A and R. I don't know if there's been a Form A needed. Did you get a Form A for this subdivision? You did, okay, excellent, that answered that question. I think, don't need classification. Often you get a table, I think, I think where there's, and I suggest is previously you have current lot, current owner, legal information, then there's swap lots. I think what's, what's going on is, is lot one is, is getting the addition of lot one A, which was part of lot three. Lot three is getting subtracted. Lot three A is, is less lot one A, and, which is part of lot three currently. So, so I, so I suggest a table in the email.
Let me correct you, because I, I mentioned on my email, this line that you draw is incorrect. You put this going forward here. The only thing that is happening on this subdivision here is, this line right here is my property. This is gonna be cut it, okay, removed, and bring back right here on the bit of the shed. That's it, nothing else. Everything you did right here was completely wrong. I wanted to call you yesterday, but you didn't, you didn't answer. I, I, and I'll be very honest, he sent that list yesterday. We had a meeting today, he sent you a list this big. So I think he had it probably two weeks to do, he didn't do it. He sent it a list yesterday, Peter wasn't even on office. If he got today, so the guy is busy, there is so many questions. And to be honest with you, if you take a look on that, I'll, I'll tell for him in specific, I forgot your name, I'm sorry. Your name?
Jesse.
Jesse, I'm sorry. If you take a look on that list, so almost hundred percent of the question that is made, he, he made it to us, it's gonna be directly to the I S D because they're the only ones that can answer it. And the, the other ones, almost hundred percent, if you take a look on the whole list, you'll see it. I don't know what would happen, but I would be happy to present everything to him on a question.
Play it to the board, just.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Durkin?
I, I did a plan just for the history. I went back to the definitive plan, I was just trying to figure out what was going on here to verify for myself that the areas are correct.
Okay.
And, and so that was the purpose of the plan I did. This email I sent is consistent with what I sent the surveyor for the previous A and R lot. And in that, I asked for a table. The plan does not meet the subdivision rules and regulations fully for, for the requirements for an A and R plan. Whether the board chooses to accept this A and R plan or not, or, you know, address what I find deficient in the email that I was trying to go through.
You can continue to go.
Okay, I think, I think, you know, I, I'd like a table where it shows the current lots, the shifting, it's clear, the, the, the legal information and, and, you know, what the swap lots are, who's gonna be the owner. Because lot one A is becoming a part of lot one. Lot one A is, is becoming less a part of lot three. The areas are fine, and I, and I think, so, so what we typically get is, is we also get some setbacks. I can, I can do the math on lot one, and yes, that adds to a hundred feet. So they, you, you do have the hundred foot of frontage, he does. So he meets, so I think, so what I was asking for was a table. And, and add a table with minimum setback requirements, minimum frontage lot area and the actuals, something like the table in my, below, good days. Right here, you wanna know the, the lot owners, right here. Everything you were looking for is right there.
There's setbacks and everything.
There's lot swaps going around, there's lot swaps. So, so I, I think it could be clearer, that's why I suggested this table.
But you, you asked this of Hayes Engineering the last time around.
I did.
And they did not provide it to us.
No response, I called, left a message, I sent the email, I never got an email response or, or a phone call.
And you brought that to my attention.
Yes.
Yeah, so I will go to Peter tomorrow to prove that he didn't do it. Because I was with Peter three days ago, he didn't do it.
So.
He sent the email, and I am cropped on that email. He sent the email, I can tell you exactly what time he sent it, was this week. Because before, she's my witness, that he didn't even had it, the plans, I sent it. How he did this, how he sent, all the comments, a week ago, if he didn't even have the plans. That's not true.
Hold on.
That's not true.
Hold on for a second, please.
That's not true.
Hold on.
I don't know why, no, I, I wanna talk because I'm in front of the camera.
Alright, you're gonna wrap this up.
So, you can do it, you can do it, right, trust me.
Stay behind the podium.
Yeah, I will. You can do it, but this time, yeah, this time, I'm here just for A and R. This guy, I'm talking about this guy itself, okay?
He's trying to tell you, and he brought it to my attention the last time, and I knew the gentleman that left Hayes, he was a friend of mine.
Tony left Hayes almost six months ago, he just found out that two days ago, and he called.
I don't, I don't question that. That's not my question here. He gave to Hayes Engineering the proper way and, and which way this should be labeled, six months ago. He sent it to Tony.
Him?
What happened at Hayes doesn't concern me. What, what concerns me is what you're presenting to the board now.
Yeah, no, but my, but that, that's a, a good point right now. If he sent that email to Tony a while ago, and Tony doesn't work over there anymore, and nobody knows, how are we gonna know? He should call the office and talk with Peter, which is the owner. He just sent that email yesterday morning, he's a proof of that. And he's been treating us so bad, he's been, he, he's getting a bad faith. He's the only, the only person I see in the twenty years my father got mad in life was with this guy. You know why? Because he doesn't know what he's doing it. I'm telling you, Michael, Michael, we, I went to the, the town to make a complaint because he's been so, so what's going on here? Because this is a simple thing.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close this, and we're gonna continue it because it's, it's late and everybody's attentions are, are a little out of control. We're not, we're not gonna attack employees, we're not gonna have you keep speaking over everybody. Oh, I'm gonna close, I'm gonna make a motion to close this, and we'll continue it.
I'll second that.
Okay?
Sure.
Jesse, if I may.
One second.
If, if I may, before you, before you make a motion to vote on it, there is a time contingency for an A and R plan, twenty-one days from submission of it. So if, if you're inclined to continue, you need to get the applicant's consent to do that, otherwise.
We're gonna, we'll ask out of the applicant to give us the timeframe, to give him the time to work this out, so it meets, meets our subdivision rules.
Or we can take the vote.
Yeah, but I will ask him for one favor this time. Yeah, 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 go ahead.
Want to continue?
So just, yeah, so looking at these, the comments that Larry has here, these are all excellent points, and they're all well-made, and he's correct about all of them. And I think these are important things. If we're talking about a particularly complicated plan, you absolutely want to have these. But what the plan you have before you, really what your concern is, is do you have the frontage on one of three types of ways? That's it.
That's it.
That's what I was trying to get to a half an hour ago, that this was all waste of time and energy.
And they do.
So with that.
And they do, so with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve this A and R as presented.
I'll second that. All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, this is an approved plan, we'll sign it tonight.
Thank you.
And I am also gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Do I got a second?
Yeah.
Got a second, all favor, adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero.